Call the meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. We'll start with Business Manager Veek.
Cynthia H. Mickelson. At a regular meeting of the school board held on Monday, June 12th, 2017, the school board declared you were a duly elected member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5. Section 13, 814 of South Dakota law provides that newly elected members of the school board shall qualify and assume their office at the annual meeting of the school board in July by taking and subscribing to an oath or affirmation to support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and to faithfully perform the duties of school board membership. At this time, as Business Manager of the district, it is my pleasant duty to administer this oath. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Cynthia H. Mickelson, having been elected to the office of member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5 of Minnehaha County and Lincoln County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitutions of the United States and the state of South Dakota and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of school board membership.
Thank you. I, Cynthia H. Mickelson, having been elected to the office of member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5 of Minnehaha County and Lincoln County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of school board membership.
You have two oaths. I've signed each of them. You can sign one or both. Keep a copy for yourself and we'll have one on file in the business office. Thank you and congratulations and welcome aboard.
Welcome Board Member Mickelson. You'll notice this evening Board Member Ryder is gone. She won't be present this evening due to being out of town. I need an approval, an emotion for June payroll in the amount of $13,303, $326,94 and claims to vendors in the amount of $21,7431 and 28 cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Supplement agenda. 5A is approval claims to Sanford Health Care. Can I have a motion for 5A 1 and 2?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries with an abstention from Board Member Mickelson. May I please have a motion to approve the Avera Healthcare System, 5B 1 and 2?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries with an abstention from Board Member Parker. Over to Business Manager Veek.
Well, now entertain nominations. I will now entertain nominations for President of the school board.
Nominate Kate Parker.
Second.
We have a nomination of Kate Parker. Are there any others? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor for Kate Parker as President, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Want to move?
Somewhat unceremonious, but thank you very much. Want your Diet Coke?
I do, I do, I do.
Okay.
Yikes.
Well, thank you, everyone. I would now like to get a motion for the nominees for Vice President of the school board.
I nominate Kent Alberti.
Second.
Any others? All right, all those in favor of Kent Alberti being Vice President, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Congratulations, Kent.
Thank you.
Would you like to move?
No, I'll stay here. We can do musical, we'll do musical chairs at the next meeting.
May I get a motion to authorize pay for school board members, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say same sign. All right, motion passes. And may I get a motion to acknowledge the designation of banks as depositories for funds of the district?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Designate the Sioux Falls Argus Leader as the official newspaper. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Oh, second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did I? Oh, sorry. Sorry, who knew at this? All right, did I, any opposed? Well, we're still on F. Any opposed? No, okay, that motion passes. Going back to E. Establish the second and fourth Monday of each month as designated board meeting dates. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I know, any discussion? No, okay. Motion passes. Authorization of membership to associated school boards of South Dakota. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, and can I get a motion for the appointment of delegate and alternate delegate to the ASBSD conference?
I would move that Kent be the delegate and Cynthia be the alternate.
Both accept that? Okay. Any discussion? Second. Any discussion? All right, signify, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that motion passes. Okay. May I get a motion to approve the minutes of a meeting held on June 26th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry. Okay, we'll finish this one out. Any, no discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Persons wishing to address the school board, Bev, I have two, and they are on agenda topics for the budget, so we will take those when we get to the reports of the superintendent. Okay, good news report.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come this evening. I was going to give you an update on what's been happening in the Sioux Falls School District for meals during the summer. Hard to believe sometimes that we are doing that, but we're excited to say we're doing thousands of meals across the district for a variety of programs, and we're very excited about that. It always makes us unique to the state to realize all the kinds of things that we're doing day in and day out during these summer months, and so I thank you for that opportunity to do that. So I want to update you in terms of the kinds of things that you have been supporting in our community also. As an overview, I would just share with you that we have over 18 sites that we're furnishing some kind of food item or snack for. Now, those are not all the open summer programs, but when you think of the kinds of programs that are taking place within the city or for our district, we are providing snacks and breakfast and lunches for a variety of them, and so that's what I'll be sharing with you briefly. What we try to do when we're thinking about the summer and the kinds of things that are taking place is to try to decide what kinds of programs we can make available to our students and to our families. And so again, we have quite a range of things that are available to us, but it's always interesting for the offices and peer, if you will, to realize, holy cow, you do all that kind of thing? And we're very excited that we can do it to offer the kinds of things that we think are so important to our kids and again, for our families. One of the things, for example, at Jane Adams this year with both the programs that they had offered at the site being the program for migrant learners as well as English language learners, were to continue this community eligibility program, the C-E-E, C-E-P program, thinking what was a program that we had in place within the district already that we could utilize that would help our families and our kids for breakfast and lunch, and so we were able to do that, so we could feed both groups without cost to the families and to the students. You'd be excited to know that we also carried through the breakfast in the classroom there also in that we were able to provide that for Jane Adams, for the older kids, and so that was kind of exciting to see that carry through from what's been doing, what we've been doing in the school year to see how that worked for us in the summer. We've also had the opportunity to work with the extended school year program at Washington, and what that means is there are opportunities to continue the school lunch and school breakfast program throughout the summer if need be, and we had an opportunity to offer the breakfast program to kids that were also in the migrant and ELL programs at Washington and so that we could do a breakfast there for them, and so that was at Washington for them each day. Those kids currently walk down to Annie Sullivan for lunch when they had, they just finished their session, excuse me, but they did walk down to Annie Sullivan for lunch, but we were able to do that at the school, and so that was something that we thought was very interesting and very helpful to those kids. The childcare food program operates all year with Scarborough Center, for example, and often people don't realize that. We're not only providing snacks and lunches there in the school year, but throughout the summer, and so those are meals that parents pay for the kids that are tending there. We also have the childcare program being offered with extended school year program of which Deb Mueller-Wilson works with in terms of kids that come there for the services that are at Pettigrew and at Harvey Dunn this year, and so we provide snacks there. So again, you see our trucks all over town doing all kinds of things. Kids Inc., we help with those camps also in terms of providing snacks and lunches for the kids that wish that at those sites, so we're not, we're doing that also, and that's something that parents are supporting us in and choosing to help with the cost of those, for those programs. But we also then have the summer food service program, and we've been excited that we've had so much information and publicity out there this year in regard to the operation of those programs, and we have seven sites that have been operating around the city in regard to that, and they are Hayward and Hawthorne, LBA, Terry Redlin, Annie Sullivan, Horace Mann, help me if I forget one here, Whittier Middle School, we did also, so those were sites that anybody from the age of one through 18 could come and join us for, in most of the sites, breakfast as well as lunch, and a couple were just lunch, and so those, some of them have wound down now for the year, but we have six sites that are operating right now and will till August 18th, so we're excited that we can do that. Now, the big excitement though for that, of course, is who are the people that come and join us there? So we're so excited that we get a mix of families and kids that come to our sites as well as certain other partners that come and join us. We do, the multicultural center comes to the Hawthorne site, for example, and brings a busload of kids down every day for us to join us and to be at that site. We have the Lutheran Social Services summer camps that come to the Terry Redlin site and do the same thing, are able to join us for lunch, and we're really excited that we're able to pair with Climb High and with, for example, that Washington Summer School that I talked, well, Washington Summer School also, another one outside of the one we were doing breakfast for, that we can provide meals. Think of some clever or unique way to implement the programs that are available to us, so we have a variety of them function, and that's what I'm trying to share with you. Now, what does that mean? Talked about lots of programs, it talks about thousands of numbers, and so what we're doing are over 25,000 breakfasts, snacks, and lunches within the city for the month of June, so we're anxious to see what July and August do for us on those totals. A breakout would be, for example, 5,663 breakfasts that we've done. We've done 8,315 snacks, and we've done 16,484 lunches. So we've kept the 25 staff members for child nutrition services that are working this summer very busy, trying to keep those things going and getting around the city to the sites and places that we need to and wish to deliver service. The last thing I might share with you also is that Feeding South Dakota has always been very involved in our program, and they continue to do so with the snack pack program, and so those totes of kits are delivered to our sites on Fridays or earlier in the week for distribution on Fridays, and so that's been good for us all to realize that that's an option for families if they wish to grab those and take them with them for the weekend, and so those are available, and that's been a very big plus for all, both of our programs. But lastly, so I want to thank you and the community for all the support that we have each year that we receive for the operation of the program. We're reaching out to our families and our community to let them know that we do care and we have options. Come join us for lunch, join us for breakfast, we're here and anxious and excited to do just that for the summer in Sioux Falls. Any questions that I could answer for anyone?
No questions.
Just thank you, thank you, Joni, for all of your support. I mean, I think about all the kids and families that are supported through the meals that we provide or even the snacks that we provide, and it just makes me incredibly proud of what we, what we offer our kids and our community. Thank you.
I have one question. Do we know how much this has increased from like last summer to this summer for June?
We usually would be able to tell you right on the nose, but we had some staggering start dates this year that were different from last year, so we're not really quite comparing apples to apples, but it does appear that our numbers are going to be up, and so we're anxious to see those now as we get into July and August for that comparison.
I know that we talked about during the school year, kids that are hungry can't learn, and the thing that this proves or shows to me is that hunger doesn't just stop because kids aren't in school or in the regular session, and I think the fact that we have the ability to continue to offer good nutrition to those kids and their families in many cases is going to help them coming back in the fall to be able to learn, to have had at least some good nutrition over the summer and, you know, it just is so terribly important. Thank you for your hard work.
Thanks, Julie. I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the good news report that Joni provided.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? All right, good news report passes. Thank you, Joni. Conflicts of interest. Are those the, can I get a motion to approve the conflicts of interest that were provided?
So moved.
Both the administration and the school board?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, we've all reviewed them. They've been online, so we've had an opportunity as a board to look at them, and I didn't see anything nor I don't think anybody else did that was glaring, so.
All right, can I, all those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, moving on. Can I get approval for the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, that passes. And down to the reports of the superintendent.
Okay, we have two reports tonight. The first report will be a report on the adoption of the fiscal year 18 budget and certification of levies to county auditors. I'll ask Mr. Veek to come forward and present on that topic.
Thank you. You have in front of you the budget that we looked at in detail on, in April. Of course, we started the budget process back in November, culminated with the tentative approval in April. The biggest change to the budget is we moved up some expenditures in the capital for computers so those guys could get working on them in June, so we, you know, capital plan, spreads over multiple years. We, so we moved the expenditures into the fiscal year we just completed and we reduced the budget by, by that amount for next year so they could get those computers up in the classroom ready to go when students are back. That is the biggest change. You can see, and this is all in your board packets, but, and online, but we've, our tax-supported funds, which are our general fund, our special ed fund, and our capital fund total about $243 million in expenditures. We also have the self-supported funds, which are items that we don't generate a tax for, they quote unquote pay for themselves. Food service fund is the obvious one where they make meals and they, they charge either the federal government or students for those. There's others as well. The insurance trust fund's another big one. We have our own insurance fund. Those total about 53, almost $54 million. What you also have in your board packets are these levies that we'll be asking for. Those are the state maximum levies in the general fund plus the $7.5 million opt-out, which had been approved several years ago. Capital fund at $31,166 and the special ed fund at $1.461. The $3.5 million opt-out, which has now become effective because there wasn't a petition drive or not enough signatures to refer it, of $3.5 million, the administration is recommending we wait till we see where we come in at in the, in the budget that we just completed and look at what our fund balance is going to look like going forward because we said when we passed our, moved that opt-out that we were going to take what we needed to, to keep our, our fund balance in line with the recommendation from the Finance Action Network. Just a reminder, this is what we were looking at back in April. You see, our low point projected at that time was 3.9% in FY '20. Of course, when you take an opt-out, it takes a full year to, you only get a half of it in the first year, half in the second, so we'll run some projections as soon as we know where we came in at, bring that back to you in September, that's the latest, you have until the second board meeting in September to set those, to lock those levies in. I would just point out, you know, we had some questions about levies. We did some work and I'm going to be presenting to a group on this, so thought I would just bring this here. This is a comparison of our current, where we sit as of 2017, and this compares us to our neighbors, basically the school districts that either touch us or within a couple miles of our borders, and on the owner occupied, well, you can see on both, I guess, so these are the individual levies, this is the total school levy here. We are the, we are $8.39 on an owner occupied home. That's the lowest amount. The second lowest is, is 8.83. The third lowest is 8.94. We're pretending, if we took the whole 5 million, I don't think anybody plans to, we're going to, and I think as a matter of fact, we said we weren't and we would take what we needed, that would be 30 cents. So I, if, if we held that, our, you know, our property taxes would be up 30 cents higher than what we were projecting, and this is a look at a home, just a 15-year history and kind of came up in one of the conversations about the opt-out, but the reason we picked 15 years is because 2002 was the last year before the school district had an opt-out, so there was no opt-out in 2002. Opt-out started in 2003 and we've had varying amounts since then. So this is an actual home, it's in Minnehaha County, it's in southwest Sioux Falls. Property taxes, the school taxes that were paid on that home in 2002 were $1,0155. The school taxes that were paid on that home and are, are being paid on that home in 2017 are $1,0187. In 15 years, the taxes on that house are up $32. That's a 0.2% per year increase or 2.8% in a 15-year period. The house also has city and county taxes. If you total the whole thing, total all three together, the average annual increase is 1.2%. I know it came up, questions about what taxes were doing and who were driving what on the taxes, we thought we'd answer that, but I kind of digressed with that. I would just ask that you approve the FY '18 budget as presented and certify the levies to the Minnehaha and Lincoln County auditors. Thank you.
May I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Oh, we can.
Comments first?
Yes. We'll start with Mary Shiel Busey. Please state your name and address and I believe you have five minutes on topic.
That's right, I don't need five minutes. Most of you know me, I'm Mary Shiel Busey. I live at 7625 West Virginia Street here in Sioux Falls. I have grandchildren in the district, and I come before you tonight representing a group of South Dakota Learn. I want to share with you before I make my statement. These are the thousands of signatures received from people. It was not that people refused to sign. Okay? I want to address the statement that was made to the media regarding being glad that people would not sign the petition. I want to caution you on that statement. Just because only a few dozen signatures were turned in does not mean that only a few dozen signatures were received. Just because the 4,878 signature threshold was not reached in 20 days, please do not marginalize the thousands who did sign the petition or the hard work of the dozens who circulated petitions. Do not discount the seniors, those on fixed incomes, or the working poor for whom this property tax increase combined with the sales tax increase affects the most. Most we spoke with didn't even know what you were doing and were supportive of our efforts. We, the taxpaying citizens of the district, still hold that the onus was on you as stewards of our money to be more transparent and just go the little extra mile to take, to go to the people and tell them why you want their money and what you want it for. And last, but certainly not least, I ask you to have enough respect for the people of the Sioux Falls School District to stop saying that this isn't really a tax increase. You've taken away, if you take the full mill levy, and even if you don't, take the full levy, even if you take part of it, you've taken away tax relief promised to the taxpayers of the Sioux Falls School District, and even the Argus Leader called that a tax hike. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And George Han? Please state your name and address.
George Han, 647 South Main, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm a lifelong resident of the community, Washington. George Hahn, 647 South Main, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm a lifelong resident of the community, Washington High 67, Sioux Falls College 71. I won't go through my credentials. They're fairly extensive. What is the exact mill rate by which we are opting out? I looked at information on the screen and now I'm confused. How many mills are we raising taxes by pursuant to the opt-out? Anybody know?
Do you want any answers?
How many mills?
30 cents if we took the whole amount.
How many mills?
30 cents per thousand.
30 cents per thousand. All right, that's three mills, correct?
It's 30.
30 mills per thousand.
Yes.
On a $200,000 assessed valuation, that therefore would be $90. Is that a fair statement?
$200,000 would be 60.
$60? Yes, you're correct. $60. That's $5 a month. All right, that's a statistic I want to elaborate on. Every time you raise taxes, you devalue real estate. Principal and interest on purchasing a house runs about $5 per month principal and interest per $1,000. If you thus raised taxes by $5 a month, you've devalued that house by $1,000. Why? We are not a rapidly rising economy of wages. That may happen in Minneapolis. It might happen at Burnsville. It might happen somewhere in Florida. We're not an economy that supports rapidly rising wages. We have an exceptional number of seniors who are not receiving squat in the social security increase. I think I got another 0.3% this year, which is, throw it out. Devaluing property is not your job. Finding a way to save that money is your job. What have any of you done to scrutinize that budget and see where you can economize on the amount you intend to raise with this opt-out? Have we farmed out such things as payroll, such as accounting and other administrative jobs that most larger businesses, especially in the quarter-billion-dollar range, farm out? Do we need seats filled at every level of administration in this building? I'm old enough that I remember when the school district had three and a half employees. Three and a half, and they went to a little building south of Washington High. The moment this building opened up, there were 60, then 100, then 200, then 300. How many people are in this building right now? Do you know?
Sir, if you have some specific questions...
I want a number.
We can certainly address your specific questions. If you would write them down, we can get those answers back to you.
I'll tell you what. I expect to have a full copy of the budget available for me before close of business tomorrow with a number of total employees that this district has. That's a very simple request and somebody here has that figure.
I believe the budget is... It's online.
It's already online, George.
No, I want to know what you're doing to save money, if anything. I don't see it. People are very upset. This opt-out didn't have enough time to get off the ground because of the weekend of the Fourth of July. I understand that. I signed it as early as I could, but the simple fact is this. What have you done to save money? And that is something the public is entitled to know before we devalue real estate by raising taxes. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the adoption of the FY '18 budget and certification of levies to county auditors. Any further discussion?
Yes, Kate, thank you. I'd like to just thank you, both of you, for your concerns and questions because raising taxes is not something any of us want to do or take, and we take it very seriously. This is an option that has come to us because of situation in our increase of our costs per student in our district and so forth. And in addressing, we are, we're looking for saving. I'm new to the board tonight, so I just want you to know that. But we, and we are looking at savings and so forth going forward. We, I believe at the last meeting, Todd even brought his savings to us. But what we need to do is to make sure, for example, I was talking to a friend of mine, we're going to probably have to looking at maybe expanding and building more buildings in our district. One thing that would affect our bond rating is what our revenues are and what our, what we have in savings and our things. So it will affect our rating. So we will actually be saving the taxpayer at longer term if we have a good bond rating. Second of all, if, what also will devalue your property is if we have a bad school district because we're not providing a good education to our students in our district. And that's what we're all here to do. And I do appreciate what you're saying. I don't like raising taxes either, and I do feel this is raising the taxes. I don't agree with that it isn't. But we do want to listen to you and I do appreciate it. The school district budget is online. You can also pick up a copy of it in printed form. I don't like looking at stuff online, so I like the printed form that we can get these at the office for you. We do have that for you, for you to look through and appreciate any comments you would have on that. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Go ahead.
Well, since I sit on the Budget Committee and have for three years, that budget, this budget gets gone over with a fine-tooth comb. We, we have found efficiencies time and again. And we had the Finance Action Network that we, we brought in some of the, some of the most successful CPAs, some of the best CFOs from companies in Sioux Falls, large companies, small companies, to go over our budget. We, we opened up our books entirely to that group of people, which is not a common occurrence in school districts of any size to make sure that we were being prudent stewards of the public funds. Their recommendation was that the opt-out would be necessary. As Cynthia said, we look at long-term view. And long-term, we need to position this school district as a business, a large business that it is, so that at some point, when we have done a comprehensive facility study and we have made some decisions after a great deal of public input through that process, we will need to run a bond issue. And we want to make sure that we have financially positioned this school district to be able to do that. And I'm, that's enough. Thank you.
Done.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Right, passes.
Thank you. Our second report for tonight will be a report on summer academic programs. But prior to the report, I want to introduce to you our person new to the central office, but not new to the district. That's Dr. Teresa Boyson. Dr. Boyson will be taking over as an assistant, actually has taken over as our Assistant Superintendent in charge of academic achievement. So by way of introduction to you tonight, Dr. Boyson.
Welcome. Thank you. Well, tonight I'm here with some great news about the summer programming that happens in the district. We have 2,352 students that continue their education throughout the summer in various programs. And I just wanted to highlight those programs for you and let you know what's going on throughout the district. Those programs address Priority Area 1 Student Achievement, Priority Area 2 School Culture and Climate, and Priority, Priority Area 4 Student Engagement. But throughout this, the summer, they are in all these programs, and I'm going to start with our youngest in the Birth of Three program that we have 123 students in that Birth of Three program. This service is continued throughout the year through their individual family service plan goals. And then Ready to Start program addresses our new incoming kindergarteners. And these students are, did not have that preschool opportunity, and we talk about that throughout this time of how many of our students across the community don't have chance for preschool. And so we have 95-year-olds that are ready to go to kindergarten that will have that through July and into August. Extended School Year, or ESY, goes on at two sites across the district, and that addresses students from preschool all the way through high school. And this year we have 291 students in that program. Our ELL, our English Language Learners and Mindart classes, Joni Davis addressed that just a little bit, but we have those students were at Jane Adams and Washington High, and 537 students took advantage of those classes. Summer climb, second pilot year for that, and that's at three of our sites, LBA Hawthorne and Hayward. And they have an academic focus in the morning and they do some extended learning activities in the afternoon. And we have 294 students in those programs, and that's kindergarten, first and second grade. High school has multiple opportunities. The high school students out at CTE, they have opportunity for that face-to-face speech class or team sports. We had 43 students enrolled in those programs. But then CTE is also the Proctor site for the online classes, which seems to be that growing trend. And this year we had 271 students take advantage of that program out there, and that is an ongoing process. And we have credit recovery at all three of the high schools. So far, we have 282 students involved with that credit recovery program, and about half of those at this time have regained some credit towards graduation. High school freshmen can also participate in that connections class, and that's to help them make that transition from middle school to high school. 235 students will be involved with that class. And we have multiple other altered activities for the high school students with internships and work skills trainings throughout the community with 42 students involved there. So again, 2,352 students of the Sioux Falls District are continuing their education with academic programming. However, we do have multiple opportunities throughout the district with KIDS Inc. and summer camps and our community ed classes. Deanne Conrad talked about those last, our last board meeting. And running start for the middle school programming for those fifth to sixth grade transitions. So again, the Sioux Falls District is committed to providing quality educational opportunities for students. The summer programming allows for the readiness experiences, credit recovery, earning additional credits, maintaining academic developmental and behavior goals, English language acquisition, and the opportunity for internships in the community. May I ask that you acknowledge the report?
Questions?
Thanks, Teresa.
Any questions?
With the online courses and the summer courses for high school with costs associated, I know it's reduced. I know there's a scholarship program now out at CTE. How, has that been successful? Have been, been be able to get enough scholarships to cover the cost of students who can't afford those courses or what is the status?
Right. Anyone that is able, that would like to take that online class, there have been funds available for those students, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Again, great opportunities that we offer our families, you know, all the way from birth to high school, so.
That's right.
And beyond.
It's a great place to be.
Yes. All right.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? All right, motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn? So moved. All right. Thank you, everybody. For all those in the audience, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any persons wishing to address the board, Vicki? Thank you. Can I get an approval of the minutes of June 7th, please?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Passes. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Agenda approved. And any conflicts of interest? We had those, we didn't have any to review.
Nope.
So, no discussion? Okay. Can I get a, uh, I guess we don't have a motion. Nope. Can I get approval of the consent agenda, please?
Some moved.
I would like to pull one item from the consent agenda. Under, um, 7A, approval of authos and ratifications, I'd like to pull item 12 from there, not the item 12 that's on here, but, uh, under the, under the authos, there's an item 12 that I would like to have removed, and we'll discuss that at a, at the next board meeting.
Amen. My first to include removing 7812.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item 12 for later discussion.
Yep. I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Opposed? Same sign. All right. Consent agenda passes. All right. Reports of the President. Actually, I'm just for the sake of, uh, minutes, I'd just like to, uh, acknowledge that Carly Ryder is, um, out of town and is not with in the meeting today, for those of you that might be watching at home.
President Parker, board members, thank you for this chance to speak with you. Um, I don't know if there's a lot of people who truly get excited about accreditation like I do, so, um, I get a little bit enthused. Um, to me, accreditation can be very exciting. There's a lot of things that, uh, you can learn through an accreditation process. Uh, and what we do with accreditation, I think, is very valuable. So, I want to start first by just talking a little bit as a reminder as far as how we're accredited and what that means. Uh, we do talk about that every once in a while at, uh, meetings. We are accredited through the Higher Learning Commission. That is the regional accrediting agency, and accreditation is required in order to get any kind of federal assistance through financial aid for students. Uh, Higher Learning Commission is the crediting body for all the public and the private institutes in South Dakota colleges in South Dakota. So, it is the one that fits us and, and the one that we need to be involved in. We use, and there's two main choices for the crediting process. We use the Academic Quality Improvement Program, AQUIP, it's often called. Uh, that is one that's built on the ideas of continuous quality improvement. It does have a different structure than the other pathway, and the other pathway is called the open pathway. Uh, that one is, is more of a self-study. You do it every 10 years, and the problem with the self-study, and they're trying to change this, you basically do it, you put it on the shelf, 10 years later, you're all going, what did we do last time? What did we do in the last 10 years? And you're struggling to figure this out and put it back into a, uh, some kind of document. And so, of the two, the AQUIP one is, is a much more engaged process, and it's engaged all the time. Every year, there's things that need to be done, or in most years. So our process, uh, the AQUIP process is actually eight-year. We actually got some extra years, uh, through this because they used to be a seven-year when they switched to eight years. It ended up extending us a little bit longer, so we actually got more than eight years in the process. But basically, from 2014 through 2022 is our process. Uh, we did do a strategy forum in 2014, 2015. That was on campus. It was a pilot done by HLC. They actually came and did that. Uh, opportunity for us to have all of our employees engaged, talk about continuous improvement, and look for different ways we could improve. Uh, we had teams meet. It was, it was really exciting and very successful. Uh, we were one of four pilots. They thought ours was the best pilot they did. However, they quit the process because they soon realized if we tried to do this with every school in AQUIP, we will never be able to accomplish it. And so, they decided it was just too much for them to do. Uh, no requirement in 2015, 2016, but the big requirement right now is in that 2016, 2017, we were required to turn in our systems, systems portfolio. That's basically all the things we do in order to, um, to make our, our colleges' success. Uh, I'll talk about that. I just want to show you the other ones. We have no requirement that we have to do next year. In one of those next two years after that, we have to do a strategy forum. That one is based in Chicago, so we'll have a team that will go to Chicago to do that. And then finally, you'll see at the end, we do, do our portfolio again. And then, in the end, we get a comprehensive evaluation. That's when they'll actually come on site, they'll visit us, and then they will, uh, decide on our reaffirmation of accreditation. So that's basically the cycle. So, the portfolio. The portfolio is basically divided into six different categories. We have to answer questions in each of these categories. Uh, helping students learn is all about our academics. Uh, meeting student and other stakeholder needs is about our student services, but it's also about how do we assure we're meeting the needs of our external stakeholders? Our employers, the community, the board, the state, all of those external, uh, people that are at stake in what we do. Valuing people is how we work with our internal employees and how we make sure we value them as well. Uh, planning and leading is everything from strategic planning to, uh, leadership for the administrative team, to how we, uh, involve our employees in the entire process of what we do. Uh, knowledge management, resource stewardship is making sure we're using our money effectively, that we have enough funds to continue operations, that our IT department has the right technology that we need. Um, any of that stuff that has to do with making sure the infrastructures there is going to be in that area. And the quality overview is really how do we structure our continuous quality efforts? What's the team structures we use? Uh, how do we decide which actions we're going to take, uh, do and try to improve on? Um, that's probably the one I, I wish people read the most because it really gives you an idea of what we actually do. So, this portfolio is developed with all of these different areas, and within each area, we are asked different questions. And for each question, we have to respond in three ways. We first need to say, what's your process? How do you do this? Easy example of that might be strategic planning. How do you do your strategic planning? Tell us every step. Who does what? When do they do it? How often do you do it? Uh, a big one for HLC is how do you reflect on it? At some point, you should look and say, did this process work? What, how could we make it better? And then implement new improvements based on that. So, we do process first. Once you're done with process, we also put results. How effective has that process been? A common one for that, uh, in areas, students with retention. Are you retaining students? Is your retention going up? Is it going down? Um, how successful is that? And then finally, you do a section on improvements. And this is really an opportunity to me for us to celebrate what we've done. What have we done to improve? And also, what do you plan on doing in the next two to three years for improvements? So, each of these questions, we get asked, each of these questions, we have to respond to in these three ways. So I'll give you an example of, of just what exactly we're talking about. This is 2P1, current and prospective need, and you'll see there's, uh, several bullet items. We have to answer every one of those bullet items, explaining that process. So how do we determine new student groups to target? How do we meet challenging student needs? Uh, how do we identify and support student subgroups and so forth? So we answer all those questions. Within our response, uh, in our particular case, we used our retention process, and, um, we actually took the process and made it into an hourglass. And I would encourage you to read, uh, the portfolio. I'm trying to get you to read it, so, this is my way to try to get you to read it. Intrigued a little bit? Read why we used an hourglass. Um, I think it's a unique perspective on how we do retention. Uh, but basically, um, you, you tell your process, and for mo, almost every process we do, we try to use those, uh, deploying actions model. First, how do we capture inputs? Once we have those inputs, how do we develop our plan? Once we're done with our plan, how do we decide if we're actually going to go through with that plan? Once that's decided, how do we deploy it? Then finally, how do we evaluate? Was it effective? How do we publish and communicate those results so others can see what we've accomplished? And then finally, that reflect. Take a look back at the process and see, how could we have done this better if we do this again, or if we have to do something similar to it? So, every process, we do that. This is an example of what you might see in results. This particular one is our housing students, and so, uh, it gives us an idea of, uh, retention rates are housing students. So when brand-new students coming in, what percentage of those students stay at Southeast? Not stay in housing, but stay at Southeast, uh, from fall to fall, after two years and after three years. You'll notice we have some things in yellow and green. Uh, we do have a target, and you'll see that target at the bottom is 68%. If we reach that target, it's in green, or if we're above it. If we're within 90% of that target, it's in yellow, and if we're below 90%, it's in red. That's just one way for us to quickly see, are we making progress? And as you can see here, we have seen progress, uh, in terms of how many of our students we retain who aren't housing. One of the things we do in process or in results is also say, why? Why do you think you've had these changes? And you can read that information in there about the different things that we did that we think may have impacted, uh, our ability to retain students in housing. Uh, for example, one of the things we did is more programming, trying to, uh, get them connected to each other more and connected to the campus. And then finally, at the bottom, you'll see, what are we going to do next? What are some actions that we want to accomplish in the future? And so we have different ones on there. And so as we go on, we keep updating this portfolio, and we keep saying, yep, now this one we've done, and now we've added this one. And that one's done, and we're going to add this one, and you continue to do that with your results and analysis. And finally, you do list your improvements overall. Now, in that case, uh, we did housing right in the housing, but in most cases, improvements you'll put in. Uh, for example, Southeast Tech CARES Communication System, that was a huge, had a huge impact on our ability to retain students because it was a way for us to internally communicate, uh, about a student and a student's needs. Uh, so that'd be one of the improvements. We had another improvement I put on there was academic recovery course and the housing retention coordinators. Uh, that was the course we added. If a student, uh, ends up on financial aid, uh, warning, we provide them with additional support to help them be successful again. So those are two improvements that we put in that section. Uh, so, the main thing about the systems portfolio is it's all about the who, what, where, when, but also, what's your results and what's your improvements? This document has to be out there for the public, and so you can see this is how you can get to that document. Uh, the other thing is that, in that, uh, listing that you saw of the years, this year is the year we had to send it to HLC. What happens is, HLC has a team of probably about six peer reviewers. They will read our portfolio. They will then, on each one of those sections, tell us whether they feel, yep, you're there, you're integrated, you're close, you're aligned, you got some systematic things here, but you got a ways to go, or you're reacting. You don't have anything in place. Uh, if we get any reactings, I'm going to be very upset. Um, I think what we have and what we do, uh, is the closest I can think of to integrated. Uh, so, the, the, but the whole, I, I shouldn't really do that because the whole idea is not about getting integrated and not about getting aligned. The whole idea is about them helping us figure out, hey, you're doing great here, but have you thought about this? What if you did this? Would that have helped you improve? This particular one, that's all it's for. This one will come back to us. We get to use the, the information. They will tell us some strategic things we should look at. We will take that internally, we'll adjust what we do accordingly. The one right before your accreditation is, is due again, that one becomes a much bigger issue. That's the one they will use as one of the main documents when they do that actual review. And that team that will come in and visit us will actually use that document and say, hey, we're seeing this in your portfolio. Could you explain this more? Can you prove that you actually do this? Uh, but this first one is, is a great opportunity for us to just to see what they say and then react to it. We won't get those results till probably August or September. It takes quite a while for these teams to go through it. So, um, when it gets through and when we have that information, we'll present it to you again and give you an idea of what they've overall said about how we're doing. Any questions?
Thank you, Tracy. I emailed some questions this afternoon. I did actually go over to the site, and it's an excellent job. I've actually, uh, done work with accreditation, and I view that job as somebody who's able to meet deadlines and is basically a professional stalker, much like a grant writer, to get all the information gathered. So thank you for doing that and looking at the website ability. You, you guys are right on track. It looks very, um, impressive, and thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you. Category six. If you don't read anything else, read category six.
Yeah. I jumped right there, like you suggested.
It just gives you a better idea of what all we do, so.
Okay.
One other thing I did just want to mention briefly is, uh, if you had any questions regarding, um, where we're at, applications, admits. Uh, we're up right now. Um, I, I never want to say it's going to be up because there's several months, and you never know what students in the end will do. Uh, but our applications at the end of June were up 3.6% compared to the previous, and we were up 12.4% in accepted. Part of the reason that number has jumped so highly is how we accept them. We're, we've moved some things around in the acceptance process. That's why I don't want anyone to jump to the conclusion that, oh, all of a sudden, we're going to have this huge, uh, but we are very optimistic, uh, and very enthusiastic about what those numbers are showing.
We can be cautiously optimistic at this point.
Exactly. Yep. That's the way to say it.
Yep. Thanks, Tracy.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion in a second?
Some moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor approving the systems portfolio accreditation report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. All right. That report passes. All right. Final adoption of the FY '18 budget. Rich.
Thank you. President Parker, Rich Klune, Vice President, Finance and Operations. Uh, it seems like I was just here, uh, last September, talking about the FY '17 budget. It seems like I was just here last September talking about the FY '17 budget, and now we are beginning FY '18. So this is the culmination in terms of the budget process that began last November through a series of internal developments with the budget and internal reviews, also a review by the STI Advisory Council. Saw this budget document, and then it was before you folks as a group in April for the preliminary adoption. We're now into the stages of the final adoption of that FY '18 budget. There are a few revisions related to it. In aggregate, it's $1,301 and actually lower than what we had previously presented to you. Not a lot of major changes in it. Some of the things really were relating to updating health and dental insurance premiums. When I had estimated those and when we had done the preliminary, we were going off estimates once those rates were established, had the time to go back in and adjust those to what we actually think they're going to be. Some movement in terms of regular salaries and just moving some positions around. There was one we initially had classified as a specialist. It's actually an employment contract type of position. So it's just moving the pieces around. Few extended contracts. If you recall from the FY '17 budget, we had reduced days on the number of staff to try to address some of our shortfalls and some of our concerns with those declining enrollments. There are several folks, as we've gone through this year, where we feel comfortable in adding back some days. They're really focused on admissions, retention types of activities. So really trying to focus those resources to where we're going to get the greatest value of that investment in dollars. Little bit of an increase in adjunct instruction is related to late retirement. So as that position leaves, we still have to teach the classes, so we bring the adjunct in. But all in all, pretty much stable in terms of those adjustments. And again, it was only about $1,300 as it relates to the post-secondary fund. And I probably should back up a little bit and talk about, if you guys hear me do the speech, about our four funds that we have under the post-secondary fund. The main one is that, the post-secondary vocational fund. That's our four credit-bearing programs. It's a special revenue fund. It still rolls up in part of the district financial statements, but those dollars are restricted specifically for post-secondary purposes. They can be used for K-12, and conversely, K-12 dollars are not used in our environment as well. We have three enterprise funds. Those are business-type activities. They operate like a business. So we have childcare center that you, your Joni, talked about earlier, and providing meals for. We have our own internal food service fund that serves students and the public. And then we have the bookstore fund, which is providing the books and computers for our students attending. So not a lot of adjustments in those enterprise funds. Again, mostly related to the dental and medical insurance. In the Scarborough Center, there was one adjustment. They had a vacancy in a position. We didn't know if we were going to be able to fill it at the time of the preliminary adoption. So we put those dollars in as a placeholder in other hourly. They were able to fill it. We decided we wanted to carry that into the FY '18 budget. So that's why you're seeing some adjustments there, but it's a zero, zero change in the Scarborough Center budget. So increase the full-time position, decrease the part-time position. The motion, there is a draft motion in there, and I think the thing I want to point out on that particular document, which differs from last year when we developed this, is that blank column in the middle there that says cash from fund balance. Last year in FY '17, we had a planned use of reserves to complete the construction of our facility. That is done or just about done and should be coming online, the final phases of that for this fall. But we also had a structural deficit that we talked about, and we have reported out throughout this year. I'll be back before you in September to really see how we did compared to that. I had conversations, I said, there's things that accountants like to do after the year ends in terms of receivables and payables and things like that. So once we hand it off to the state aid report in August, and that's right to when we hand it off to the auditors for their review, that's when we'll be back to talk about and look at our performance against that task. I am pleased to say that the FY '18 budget is balanced in terms of expenditures covered by existing revenue streams and not utilizing any of our reserves. I too carry the cautious optimism that my counterpart has coming before you, but I think it's still prudent to be conservative in our approaches, and we'll see how this year goes. In September, we'll be able to report out on that too, and how I think we're going to wind up as we move through the year. So good things as it relates to that. If there's any specific questions, or if you want to dive into a little more detail, I'm certainly willing to do that. You have seen this before, at least three of you have seen it before.
Sure.
Sorry. I'm the newbie.
No, that's okay.
Two questions. Large decrease, which is a good thing, in food service costs from FY '17 to '18.
Sure. Yeah. Food service was new to us in FY '17. It was part of the new building that we constructed. So we haven't had food service on campus probably for five or six years. Prior to that time, it was, it was run by a third party. So the numbers we put together were a guess.
Right.
And obviously, not a very good guess. So we made some adjustments to it, looked at what we're doing so far this year, what do we think we can do next year? And I think that once we have staff on and we kind of see the utilization of it, it was time to scale that back and bring it into a little bit more line with what we're actually seeing. If I see the 545, that'd be great.
Yeah. And then number two, and I'm sorry, I didn't get these till later today because I forgot to add me. And so I should have got my questions earlier.
No, that's fine.
But so I'm looking at page four, and when you have the funds and the 17, or the 18 revenue, total funds available expenditure budget. And so when you're saying we're not going to have to do that, I'm seeing different numbers, though, in actual expenditure compared to the revenue, basically like about $40,000 difference.
Can you show me what page you're on?
Um, four. Page four.
I don't have numbers on this.
It's the suggested motion.
Motion, what?
The page with motion on it.
Sure. Right. Oh, so you're seeing the differential down on the total.
Yeah.
Some of that is related to the enterprise funds.
Okay.
So the post-secondary fund is balanced in terms of the revenues and expenditures.
Got it. That one, yes. I do see that. Okay.
The post-secondary fund or the enterprise funds, they move a little bit. We're not out to make a ton of money on them, but they do have to make a little bit of money as we try to update equipment because they're entirely self-funded.
Sure.
Scarborough Center has been a long challenge, and we've seen that move back and forth, up and down. This year, we're a little bit behind in terms of our revenue over expenditures, but they've had some excess fund balance. We felt comfortable in not passing that differential onto the students.
Okay.
There's a small increase in terms of our rates, which you approved in the consent agenda, but we felt comfortable in that differential. And ideally, you move towards making that up throughout the year, but we're comfortable in adopting it at this level. Same goes for the other two enterprise funds, too.
Thank you for explaining that.
Other questions?
Any other questions?
No. Just a great job again, Rich. I know you've worked hard and your team. Really appreciate the effort that you put into this.
Thank you. It's much easier to stand before you this year than it was last year.
I know. You're smiling this year.
Yeah, a little bit. A little bit. And I think we're going to be pleased with the results of FY '17. We talked about all the way through on that operating task that, as I reported it out in the first three quarters, that we were on track, and it looks like we were making it. And I'm going to stand by that. We'll find out as we make these adjustments over the last couple of months of where we think we're going to wind up. So one of the things that kind of gives me some comfort is, and I think if you looked at, in the consent agenda, there was the May financial reports in there. And initially, it might cause you to seize a little bit and gasp. When you look at that differential revenue to expenditures, about 3.6 million differential there, you have to remember there's always a timing difference in our revenue stream, and our revenues always lag a month behind our expenses. So if you go out and you look at the consolidated trust and agency report, and you look at that tuition and fees account, there's 3.6 million in there. Most of that money is going to make its way into the post-secondary fund. It's just funds that we're holding out there and haven't been transferred to the district's general ledger. Now, not all of its three, not all of the 3.6 goes to the post-secondary fund. Some of it's pass-through dollars, for example, sales tax, the Bonding Authority, Housing Foundation. There's money that we have to push out to other folks, but the vast majority of that's going to come in. So when you look at that May result of 3.6, realize there's three sitting there roughly, just kind of off the top of my head, that's going to address that component of it and help bring that up. And also, remember that in '17, we had a planned use of 1.2 million or roughly 1.3 million of existing reserves. So when you look at our June payroll, it's about 1.3 million. So I think, I think we're, I think we're going to be pretty close. That's why I'm standing before you today to say, I think it's going to look pretty good. August or September meeting is when I'll have the real numbers, and we can talk about how we did.
Again, cautiously optimistic.
Yeah. I'm optimistic about that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the final adoption of the FY '18 budget?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Again, good job, Rich, you and team. Long road from November to today.
It is.
And November 2017 will come up soon. So we'll be at it, we'll be at it real shortly.
Move to budget audit.
Right. All right. So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. Adopted. All right. Anything else to come before the board?
A little to adjourn.
Okay. So adjourned.[1764.33]